Six thirty, we're at all this meeting in Joshua City Council Board. We do have a forum present. Uh, there's anybody here that's wanting to speak, we do have the registration form over here on the table. We've mentioned he goes down to give it to the city secretary. We just have the, the meeting, I'm finding some sectors, a couple of people signed up here, that's great. Um, we're going to now have the pledge of allegiance by, uh, San Diego Nichols. And after that, we're going to have the invocation by Pastor, Pastor Terry Cowboy Church, Terry Darnell. So.
Now I just want to say one thing, you guys have a great mayor. He came to my church, did a concealed carry about a month and a half ago. Half my church is concealed carrying.
Really funny plan.
Yeah, we had a lot of good time.
I mean, that's right.
Father, we just thank you. You're a great God, sovereign God, ruling this universe. We know you're still in control even though this world looks like it's in chaos. And so, Lord, we just, we just ask for your presence in our community here in Joshua, that you will protect us and our children from elementary through high school, that you will bring protection, uh, to our families in Joshua. And, uh, be with our community meeting tonight as decisions they make will, will make our community even, um, safer than wiser in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
So, as of objections, we will go ahead and let you get this filled.
I was gonna end up, yeah. Place the crowd, take a bow. But now these are our latest, our three, uh, three newest, newest offers, one through about six months now, so not twice. Uh, we'll start with the shaving, Shelly Kellogg, we actually hired out of the pen. But the college academy, we were able to hire her and she's been a part of honor. Uh, since she's been in Joshua, very excited to have her. Uh, Sean Martin, uh, comes to us sixteen years, eighteen years of experience. And we're able to smack him away from Alamo Radio, and he brings in wealth of knowledge, wealth of experience. Uh, former supervisor, former chief of police, so he might be acting like a guy. He's wealth, wealth of experience and we're happy to have him. Last but not least, he's, he's a little shy and doesn't like to be touched, so. Uh, Poplar, uh, Justin Bryce, uh, comes to us, uh, from, um, Hood County, he's the latest senior with the news. So we lost quite a few to Hood County, uh, but we've got three of the better ones back. I love the other ones. We won't bring them back. Uh, also Price is here with us, about four, four years experience. Uh, we'll go down to Victoria and then Hood County. As well, so we're happy to have all three of them on the street. They're, they're looking so good.
All right, we'll start our work session, determine a couple more. Okay? Just so you know. Uh, for the local services, we've got a review edition, we have a building inspector, a admin position, and also we have a, a permanent clerk of, uh, Cheryl Klein.
Um, animal services has two newer employees, my son, sorry, it was an English, I lost it. And then we have Miss Ali over here, who just came with us. Now we also have, uh, Britten Browns, uh, she comes from, uh, from the city of Methlethian with several years of experience with HR. She's our new HR manager.
Wow. We are growing on this house. Welcome to everybody, maybe they're very excited to be here.
Would you please?
All right, starting work session, uh, we do, and some questions related to the budget, and financial state.
Um, Mayor, I went back and looked at a few of the things, uh, that you commented about. There are some areas that, uh, for being only eight percent end of the month are, um, some of the expenditures are up. Those are typically front-end loaded contracts for maintenance or annual payments for equipment that we make at the first of the year. That, that's what's got those askew. You'll also notice, um, in the payroll line item, everything is running just over that eight percent, but that's because there were three pay periods in October, so it's a little heavy for that first month also, and that'll, that'll level out next month. Um, and then the other expenditure was in, uh, the fire marshal's office. And those are, uh, software subscriptions, uh, for the, uh, software that they use for code enforcement. And then also there's, uh, we're still working on the storm siren, uh, issues. And so there's, as we replace some of those parts that have, uh, they'd be replaced, that, that money's up a little bit also, but. And then you'll get a proposal or you'll get an update next month on, uh, the final solution for the storm sirens. We'll, uh, look at making some move on a couple of them as the city has grown, moving some of the coverage and you'll get a, you'll get a map and we'll see that next month. But some of those costs are, are in here too. That's why some of these numbers here are a little off. Right, it's, it's equipment purchases. Yeah. Yes.
Any questions?
The miscellaneous is the storm sirens.
Other questions? Okay, uh, it's about to discuss draft, we didn't have pre-preservation work.
Um, uh, we gone through and looked at several neighboring cities, um, and Aaron and I have talked about a few things and uh, then he's worked with the, uh, city engineer and some other folks and uh, he's got some recommended changes, some updates. And are, are these from Steve? Is that where these came?
Yes.
Okay. And then one of the things that I noticed is we, this ordinance mentions multiple times about protected trees. But it doesn't have protect, protected tree list. That list is found in the landscaping ordinance. And so I, I think we should probably either just, and I think here they've referred to it, which is fine, they refer back where that list is. What we have put in here is a list of trees that are not protected. I'm not sure if that's creating any confusion or not. Um, I think we'll work with people to.
Excuse me, I was wondering why would protecting, very certain factor.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they're not. Uh, but I think if we move that other one either into here or just make clear that we refer to it in the landscaping ordinance as water approved trees to put in. Um, they've cleaned up, you know, how they determine what's protected based on the caliper size. But there's some recommendations in here that you'll see where things are striked out when they're brought back in red. Uh, tho- those would be the recommended changes that are suggested at this point.
If we migrated the other list here, just um, dropped in a header on each list. Just so that there's no confusion of what that list is.
I think we can do that fairly easy.
Mark, that list is non-protected.
Yeah, Aaron and I have talked about that, about doing that, and I think that's something that probably the, the final draft will have, we'll include that in there.
Keep things a little less.
That's true.
Quick reference.
And they've also uh, kind of changed up the permitting fee and the process to remove, uh, trees, but this also, you know, there's this doesn't really affect a person's private property. If he had, you know, it was a problem tree he needs to deal with, it's not designed for that. It's mainly designed for to prevent clear cut and then developments. So if you've had time to review those, Aaron, uh, is here and probably can better answer the questions about it than I, but we'll try if you have any questions.
Hey, I.
Yes, sir.
How big is the park in?
I'm sorry? Three acres.
I know we had a minimum of three acres in here, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that, it, it's a little over three acres, kind of. And not really pie-shaped, but it is kind of funny shaped. And, uh, it's only got one tree on it. We're going to name it a single tree, Park. Then he gets a job. Jerry House. Um, I couldn't tell you. I don't know what a silver maple is. Um, I, I can tell you the protect, the protected tree list currently came from Charlotte Connolly, uh, when she was a council member, she was an arborist at some point. And so she, she helped us put together that list. Why this one wouldn't have been included, I don't know. We can inquire. Uh, find it. We've also worked with, uh, the guy down the street, the, has the landscaping business, the nursery.
Correct.
He, he's been working with us on some things too. We've reached out to him, so, uh, we can, we can get that answer from him.
Isn't that a different, uh, create level? Uh, the white suit popular, isn't that more like?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
To give him, just having, go through, oh, just see if he can courage with the decision, what's, checking what's not. He has any suggestions?
You know, I didn't need.
You don't want hackberries on the list?
You know, hackers not that bad of a tree once it gets fully mature and gets up above. Or rip your head off, if you grab it next to it.
We probably have more trouble with cottonwoods than any other tree, yeah. Okay, well, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get those answers and then we'll get a, we'll get it, get this cleaned up and then get that other scale. Once we get them updated, we'll get it dropped in here.
Sure.
Send them back.
Let me just have, yeah, those zoning ordinance has to go through P and Z with notice. And a council, that'd be real tough, uh, to get all that done, and, and, yeah.
We're gonna run it, we'll have it ready for P and Z next month. Um, and then we're back to y'all. Do we have to?
Yeah.
For the zoning part of it. Yeah. You're right.
Um, we don't have too many updates. Uh, Patrick did come to answer any additional questions. They really were kind of waiting for us to make a decision on, uh, where the proposed city hall may be located for the, it's going to be one of the main bugs, but also one of, one piece of the base is to provide internet for just the city facilities as well, get us on our, our own, like, closed network. Um, so, uh, we've given Patrick direction, unfortunately, um, Jeff uh, is sick and wasn't able to, but Jeff, at my understanding, met with a couple of providers earlier this week that are interested in, um, partaking in it, so I don't know if he's, if you want to kind of speak on.
Yeah, we, we've reached out to several and had conversations. We were kind of waiting on finalization of what the plan is, so that we can settle that in. A level of interest will, will depend on, in where we're, where we're putting. Did, did we have some discussion about taking it? We still eventually going to pay that to, what's that?
Ground Valley.
We still going to do that eventually?
Currently, yeah, I mean, currently, because there's not a, a different option, but I, part, part of the caveat to this is, um, the federal government is releasing, I believe on the twenty-third, or rather, they're mapping for the new infrastructure funds for broadband construction, which is going to tie in with the state mapping that was done, I guess, in, in out two months ago. So we may in the next week or ten days get a look at how some of the funding specifically for these areas is going to look and how achievable it is. And then we've got to sit down, schedule Monday with, uh, Grant Works, who's actually here tonight for something else to see about, we're going to make sure we have them watching for, for these opportunities for us and use them to help reach out for some of these grants. And so we're going to talk more Monday about that and find out how to make sure that we're plugged in so that we don't get swallowed up by the big cities and not and not hit anything.
Mike, is that rural broadband, rural broadband initiative?
Yes.
Funds? So we're talking about using RBA funds for, for projects? This, this initial, initially, we're going to lose once I'm tying all the city schools together, creating our network. We did always build up that. So it would be kind of a cool usage funds if we use the RBA for that, because the public safety, public sector will buy Wi-Fi parks and things like that. And potentially use the other funds for that broadband initiative to pull that out in the second phase, that may be the direction we want to go.
It could well be.
Well, now that we've solidified, we know where the city hall, we are going to be, we're ready to get going and we'll get some things turned up with some of these carriers and then report back to y'all before we make our next move.
Is there something you want to try to hear about next month, Mayor? Because the holidays, you want to wait till January?
Um, I, I know we were going to try to do it on a monthly basis, but I think the holiday and everything will be okay until January, so it's okay with that. Wait for, for the next one, Jim.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. The other question. Okay, next time is update from Mayor and Council members, uh, to the staff members. Pastor Darnold, uh, invited to be to attend the Capitol Church's anniversary. I did not realize the Capitol Church is in there for ten years. And, uh, it was a well-attended and a very fun time to be. I really enjoyed that. Had a, a good time at the city, uh, Thanksgiving together yesterday, then had a wonderful lunch today with the, the senior citizens at the, uh, high school. It was a, a very good time. A lot of people out in the community are, are excited about what they're seeing this doing. Getting a lot of questions and a lot of excitement about our, uh, Christmas Main Street thing coming up December third, so hope y'all can attend that and, and be a part of that as well, so. Mike, you got anything?
Um, no.
Um, even so, just for a short period of time.
It was a great time.
Sorry, I couldn't stay long.
No, thank you for what you get.
Well, I'll thank you, sir, the development, Mayor. Um, any staff that anything they want to report on?
Mayor, could y'all move us, Max, a little bit closer? They're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
She's online.
Uh, anything from type A or type B boards that anybody wants to bring up to us? Don't you got to have anything from type A?
No, nothing that I can think of.
Okay. All right, or you know, type B, anything, so I didn't have any of my type Bs?
Just the park construction, you know, you know, it's looking, looking good, you know, where we get the money from is a different story.
Thank you. Anything man before you?
Oh, I wanted to be on a lot of things.
Okay.
Now, I think the, the, the words going along, I guess. We did a lot of work last, maybe to get their ordinances set up. But mostly all of that we got, so the kids are going to keep moving. Some of their stuff at their house. That helps some of the rural areas. Not being, um, don't compliance issues. All going good.
Well, thank y'all for, for being involved in things that you're involved with. Alice, once again, thank you so much for all the things that you're putting together.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, I am excited about the Christmas on Main Street.
It's going to be great.
Can you give a little description to everybody what's going to happen?
Yeah, we are closing off Main Street from Hickory Tree to La Mesa. Um, we will have, um, booths set up, a little market, Christmas market. We're going to have Santa, Mrs. Claus is here. The whole, um, young black buildings going to be, um, Santa's going to be on one side, and then kids activities on the other side, completely free for everyone. We're going to have a couple of bounce houses there. Um, Police Department's going to be set up and work with the kids a little bit. Um, we're going to have a, the tree lot in here. And then across the street at the Police Department in their parking lot, it's going to be like a little country bake-off type, um, contest. So anybody in this area who wants to enter cookies, cakes, whatever they want, and have some wonderful contest and great awards for it. They will be needing judges. Yes.
I'm sure you, you're a lot of volunteered for that.
Yeah, and it's on December third from two to six P M.
And this is in conjunction with the chamber.
That's correct.
So, um, in case you guys don't know, our chamber is up and active and going, so they're, they're out there. I don't know, Mary's working real hard to, to get that on track. All right, well, we want now to public forums, presentation, or recognition. Uh, anybody want to speak to the council? Do we have anybody sign up?
Oh, no, sir.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda, discussing his certain possible action on meeting minutes from the October twenty, twenty-two meeting. Any questions or discussion? And I'll entertain motion. Might have motion here, prove. Maybe have a motion. By Mr. Kidd, and a second time. Miss Nichols to approve the minutes as, as review the discussion. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Now moving to our regular agenda items. Item number one, public caring. I mean, which is the public caring at sixteen-four. Um, or a zoning change regarding approximately eight point nine nine five acres of land in the George Castleland survey abstract number one seventy-three, in Joshua, Texas, located in six thousand one county road ten twenty-three, and change from A agriculture to single district to Harwood, single family residential district while after the construction of two residential homes.
Mayor and council, subject property is eight hundred nine nine five acres and subdividing and creating two additional lots under the two acre minimum for agricultural zoning, or for zoning change to single family residential district is needed. Uh, this property is owned the agricultural district. The proposed zoning change will allow for the construction of residential homes. The disdevelopment will be required to find a flat, and the city has agreed that these engineering-related issues that he part of the county property. This both requests comply with the city of Joshua zone ordinance, which that recommends approval. And the planning and zoning commission made there, uh, approval, a recommendation for approval on the November first Monday of this month. They made their approval.
Uh, is the owner present? Did you write it, say anything?
Um, just prove it.
Sweet. Okay, is, is there anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone votes? We got hungry, I'm in favor, I'm in major. So at six fifty-six, we'll close the public hearing. Item number two, we'll discuss considering possible actions approving a request for zoning change regarding approximately eight point nine nine five acres of land in the George Castleland survey abstract number one seventy-three, County Johnson, Texas, located six thousand one county road ten twenty-three, and change from A agriculture to Harwood, single family uh, to allow for the construction of two residential homes. If I have any questions or anything I want to talk about. My, my only question is, we don't get into a spot zoning issue on this at all, right, Terry? It's a long, it's going to put some other operators in plan, we're, we're fine. Good deal, that's the only question I, I have. So nobody has any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, we, there's only a change.
Okay, this is the most, move that we approved. Second, listen to right streets. Seconded, any further discussion? All those favor? Unanimous? All right. Thank you, y'all. It's my pleasure. Okay, and to the things we said, we're open to public hearing on considering an amendment to the zoning ordinance by amendment of which is related to the membership of the Heritage Preservation Committee, Ms. Howard.
Yes, Mayor, um, back in September when we did board appointments, um, we had a hard time getting members to serve on that board. It currently requires that all members own property or a business in this district. This new ordinance will change it as long as they are owners of property or business anywhere in a city. So this will help us to get more board members. We currently only have three.
So at six fifty-eight, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll go to item number, uh, number four, discuss considering possible action on an ordinance amending the requirements of membership of the Heritage Preservation Committee. If I have anything you want to say?
Currently, I'm at, we've, we've through those ordinance. And, well, that's not a way of proving, I just say some dudes on the board.
We have um, Miss Angela, uh, Mr. Maddox, and, um, Robbie.
You gonna have, have any two more?
Two more.
I'll second that. So we have a motion by Mr. Kidd, seconded by Mr. Brian Steen to approve the ordinance amending the requirements for membership of the Heritage Preservation Committee. Go for a discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, item number five. Discuss considering possible action on the development agreement between the city of Joshua and property owner of parcel located in category seven oh five, and authorized to manage to execute all necessary documents, Ms. Howard.
Mayor, this is part of the same project I've been working on past few months. We're just cleaning up the city limit line. Um, this is just one. We did several last month, and so the next stop is going to be the ordinance, actually, the N X, everybody from the city.
I will tell you, this man is incredibly happy. Now, was it before, but he is now.
Good. Okay, um, so item number six then, discuss consider possible action on ordinance, is any annexing, practicing, land described in exhibit A.
That's what they're on now.
You got a vote on this, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. So. I will entertain a motion for the development agreement. I'll, I'll make it. Okay, Mr. Brighton's thing, big motion, Mr. Kidd seconded, any further discussion? All those table? Unanimous? Now, I know. Okay, discuss consider possible action on ordinance, this annexing tracks of land described in exhibit A, attached here to from the city of, city of Joshua, Texas, for section forty-three point one four two of the Texas Local Government Code.
Yes, sir, this includes the agreement that you just approved and the agreements that was approved last month.
Any discussion or question? Or motion, um, like the motion made. I just, right, state that we accept a motion for the. Maybe, yeah, question, Mr. Kidd, seconded. Right? Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Item number seven, discuss considering possible action on an ordinance repealing section twelve point oh four two, uh, this is for the.
I'm just on the one.
Okay, this, this is for the, the, uh, commercial traffic on.
Yes.
Okay, so with. Would anybody have a problem with taking this to next month?
Yeah.
Problems there?
Okay, Aaron, we, we actually have to bring back, we'll bring back an ordinance, but it'll have a different cash and because of another section that's included. Okay, so I don't, I don't think we technically have to postpone this because it's gonna come back in a different form, we'll notice that. For the December.
Close it.
We just have no action on this one, just the direction we'll bring back something back, uh, next month. We can apply any different item.
All right, okay, item number eight, discuss considering possible action on approval of resolution warning the administrative services provider contract. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four C B V K Texas Community Development Block Grant. It's granted.
Can you say that three times, bud?
Three times.
Um, we just recently went out for, uh, R C and R F P. For a grant administrator as well as a, um, engineering services for, um. Appropiation to the community development block grant, uh, these funds will be used to hopefully redo, um. Uh, cat, that's not cattle, what's the other one? Keep getting the two streets, it's, um, cob, cob, cob street is what the intent will be for that. So, um, we closed the bidding process on November eighth. We had a panel of five people that scored it, um, the scoring for the grant administrator, um, Grant Works scored the highest, um. And then for the administrative services or C D, the engineering services, Jacob Martin, um, was for the highest of both of them.
So.
We do have Grant Works here, um. Cassidy, what Grant Works here.
Um, am I having questions? Concerning this?
Or swing? On, on the which, um.
Oh, except for the note three, so.
Yeah. Yes. We have, um. So put in the extreme.
You're, you're, you're looking at the. You're, you're looking at the go-through truck. Or this.
We, we skipped over it.
So, um, on the, um. Like, like. We're looking to redo cob street, we're going to widen it, or we just want to.
What I'm hoping to be able to do is, of course, that'll be submitted as a project to the community development block grant, if we get it. Um, that street has got. Um, some issues with it, it's, uh, it's got some base figures, obviously. Part of the street is curved, part of it's bar ditched, there're flooding problems over there if it roll over onto Baldwin and into. A couple of other areas down below it, um. And we're hoping to get, not widen, but to get the street. Taken out, completely rebuilt, new curbs and hopefully get rid of the bar ditches and get everything and. Get it all in ground.
The initial repairs before we got into the, the failing, um. Issue, the failure issues where it was estimated at like a hundred and fifty-one thousand, but with a complete repair, it's gonna be significantly more, so.
I know Grant Works has been doing some, some other workforce and everything and it's been a very.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, that means right.
Relationship we've had with him.
Yeah.
So I'm excited this, the break of the. I'll speak along with that. If I have any questions or anything? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
So these aren't two different items, um, the first one is a reservation for awarding the Grand Administration of Services and then the second item would be for engineering services.
So for the, um.
Number eight.
Yeah, great, for, for the Ministry of Services, uh, right in contact, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Supporting. Friends. For rent.
I'll second that, okay, so, uh, this Nichols move that we award the. Administrative Services right of contract to Grant Works, seconded by Mr. Brightonstein, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, and then, uh, next item is discuss consider possible action on the resolution of the engineering. Architectural and surveying services contract for the, the work, and that was to take a part, yes. Okay, uh, any questions about this contract? Okay. Entertaining motion?
I like the motion. Uh, that we accept the. Engineering, architectural and surveying contract. And who did you say it was?
Jacob Martin.
Jacob Martin.
They're local, they're, they're one of their main offices and whatever.
Okay, we're good, Martin. Okay, that's right. So we have a motion by Mr. Brighton to award the engineering, architectural and surveying services contract for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That's the number one, right? To Jacob Martin, seconded by Mr. Kidd, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Item number ten, discuss considering possible action on approval of a J three agreement of paramount outdoor advertising, Ms. Pecat.
Uh, this is the agreement that was brought up, um. With, uh, Mr. Tolson. Who, uh, this is another company he's involved with to put a, uh, L E D billboard sign on property that's owned by the city that face highway one seventy-four, two-sided. He's graciously granted the city access to, for use of that sign for. Certain things, there were some last minute details that he and Terry worked out. As far as, uh, Terry extremely knows, political advertising and. Few other things, so as not to make it look like we were. Choosing a side, one side or the other, and they got that, and I think the term was a bit of an issue, um. Five years.
Uh, ten years away.
I mean, they wanted twenty, I think, and you got, y'all settled.
Yeah, one of the concerns is that there was, wasn't really a termination provision, it's like just to go on and on, on. So we have a ten-year agreement. And then after ten years, we want to get out of it, we have to give three hundred and sixty-five days, and the other one, the other issue was about. No, the bullet by advertising, I guess, my concern was if we're gonna have space saying City of Joshua. And then to have someone saying, you know, John Smith, the mayor next to it, would look like the city is endorsing somebody, so. This is a whole fine discussion, we got that, because I would love to be no blood advertising on it as well.
Okay, that political climate has to be for all, all political.
Look, all blood advertising. If we have any sort of disagreement, we have a mediation provision in, in the agreement as well, so we could try to resolve everything. You know, just by going through mediation, if we couldn't resolve it prior to that.
I have one question.
Sally.
On. Section, so that in article two, where it's talking about the, what the city is allowed to do as far as their advertising.
She can't participate in the meeting from.
Oh, okay, hang on, hang on a second, you know.
Um. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, we won't be able to put you ahead of you, Shelley participated via Zoom. There, it's, it's not allowed on the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, I can't.
As soon as you want to ask a question, you just.
I do.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, could I ask a question as a citizen?
Sure, I, I'll try to answer the question.
And, and I think it is for, the question would be for you, it's saying that, um. The city is permitted to post on either side, I know that there was a question last month when we were talking about. That maybe initially only one side was going to be digital and the other side may not be digital at first, but if they both become digital. I'm saying that we can post on either side, is that a one or the other, or does that mean that we can post on both sides?
What, what's specific provision you're looking at?
Article two, um, section two oh one. Um, section B, number one.
Hey, everyone, this is Billy Tolson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I had a, I was on my way to Joshua, I'm twenty minutes out, but I pulled over on the side of the road. Um, so the intent there is that the City of Joshua is able to advertise on either side, both sides.
Okay, that's all I was curious about.
Yeah, I believe there's, there's two different references to boat, to, to both sides in there. One in, one in the first couple pages and then, um, one down in, in, um, some of the covenants. So a, as, as I mentioned, we, we'll start off with one side digital and one side vinyl. And then when we bring the second digital on, then that obviously opens up spots for the city to be on as well. So yes, the intent is that, um, both sides are available for the city in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we do have priority on the, the one side, correct? That what we had set up. That we, we have priority, um. Reference.
Well.
Black slides.
Yeah, there are black slides that, yeah, I mean, well.
It's right.
Relegated to the other side. Down, probably, yeah, probably.
Oh.
The one side. Thank you guys for, um, the discussion last month was about. The one, the one side that he started, if it's premier side, it's gonna be, have the most views because of the direction and. The way it's set. Um, I just want to mention, I didn't read through this, not to understand what it, whether or not. It was in there, but, um. Just want to make sure we're, we maintain access to the priority side, but the side that's better sized, more visible side.
Well, my, you, I, I, my understanding, reading this was. Until we get the digital on both sides, we can have the vinyl sign, or we could be on the digital side. Is that correct? So, so the way this reached, we, we can do one or the other. Can we not do both at the same time?
Yes. But I mean, that's why I was adding, you look to Tolson.
Yeah, so the preference, the preference would be that the city, uh, obviously to answer the first question, the first inquiry. Is that, yes, the, the, the digital side will be the first to go up. And that is obviously available to the city. The vinyl side, given the nature of vinyls being, you know, needing print times and, and have them installed and the, the longer duration of a vinyl. It's probably not the best scenario for the city if they want to keep, if they want to change messages, uh, rapidly and, in real time to have a vinyl print. There's, you know, um, just the cost associated to put it up and bring a message down if you want to change it frequently. So, um, the, the right-hand read digital sign will be the best opportunity for the city to get its messages across. Um, we'll, uh, up until we have the, uh, vinyl, the vinyl side, which we call the cross reader. The cross reader, when it turns digital, obviously the city can, uh, use that as, 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 as it wants to, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, does that answer the question that we had? Does that answer yours, question, Shelley?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um.
I'm moving to recruit, definitely created and.
May I have a motion by Mr. Kidd, seconded by Mr. Brightonstein to approve this three agreement? With, uh, paramount outdoor advertising. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, Billy, let's get it going.
Yes, sir, absolutely, my father would be very, very happy, he's, he's been wanting to do this for a long time. If you recall, Mike, so, um, I'll, I'll do right by the city like we always have, and I think you guys are really gonna enjoy it, it's gonna look beautiful. And, uh, it's gonna be great to, a great way to get the message across for, for everything, like we talked about in the last meeting, so. I'm happy to, to be the steward of that and I'll, I'll own it forever, our family will own it forever, so you'll see my mother's signature on the documents.
Thank you, okay, thanks, Billy. Okay, moving on to item number eleven, discuss considering possible action on a franchise agreement between the City of Joshua and United Co-op Service Internet Services, Ms. Pecat.
Where this is a. Agreement similar to what, um. We have other franchise utilities under that we're just now getting the. Uh, internet side of United Co-op, uh, lined out and under these agreements. For use of the rideaways, right now they're in. Only a couple of areas, but they do have plans for expansion, and this is the agreement that will, uh, provide the franchise fees, just like the other utilities.
If I have any questions? Entertain a motion. Also, Mr. Brighton's move that we. Uh, enter into this franchise agreement, Mr. Kidd seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none? All favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Item number twelve, discuss considering possible action of wanting the bank to pay the services.
Now, put out a R F Q for. Bank services, we did this last year and. Then some things came up that we needed to work through, put this off, we've, we've got all that stuff addressed. And we put this out, uh, last month and same as previous year, we only had, um, a single response to it. I wish was from Pinnacle Bank. Several years ago, we approached Pinnacle about doing the business with the city. But at the time, they were unable to meet the, the obligation. To, uh, collateralize all the city's assets, which is required by law, or the city's funds. They do have that ability now and have for a number of years. Uh, Joanna has gone through this, we looked over, went through it today, um, we're. Basically, the difference is we're gonna switch from Wells Fargo to Pinnacle and we'll be making deposits locally as. Versus having to go to Burleson, that's gets to be a challenge sometimes with. Moving money around, uh, outside of the city. Uh, so that was kind of motivation for it, but they can offer us everything that we're getting from Pinnacle, uh, without any. Uh, changes, startup checks, the first round of checks will be free, so we're not gonna have a big layout for different checks to go in, uh. Joanna lacks the agreement and is comfortable, we'll have a local. Banker's rep, so to speak, to talk to now and when we need to, and we're doing some other business with them, Economic Development, doing some work with them, uh, also, and, uh. We would recommend approval of this and then probably we will begin making a transition after the holidays, it'd be my guess, it'll take several months to get. Everything moved over and we'll do it kind of compartmentalized it, so we're not. We don't just have a big mess of confusion.
Questions? You know, um, which is a particular branch for you on there?
We'll mainly deal with the Joshua branch, Kevin has helped, um. Get a lot of, put together through the mountain valley side, he's got a little bit bigger staff, but our primary points of contact. points of contact will be the Joshua branch, we can use any branch, um, but they'll be our primary point of contact.
Any questions? I'll entertain the motion. I have a motion by Mr. Nichols, seconded by Mr. Brightenstein to approve this for our bank possible services, any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. And then number fifteen, discuss the possible action on the cross estimate connections of a proposed municipal complex, Mr. Peacock.
I think we were gonna do this in executive session.
Just for legal consultation, correct?
Legal consultation, consultation, okay, thank you. Yeah, I have a four G discuss, consider possible action on approval of a pumping agreement in Johnson County, especially utility district for sixteen inch water main that extends from the seven hundred block of North Main, south to Highway one seventy-four and then south to existing infrastructure and increasing water flows in Joshua Station, Mr. Peacock.
I heard this been a, a project that's been on the books for a number of years for the utility districts. Um, we've been able to work out a kind of a partnership with them to expand this to a larger project. Um, which also comes with significant cost, but it solves significant problems throughout the city by by doing this, not only economic developmental wise, but it it furthers uh, much-needed water volume in Joshua Station. Um, and ties that distribution, those points into this overhead. The, the overhead that initially fed that development area was off of Bentley. That tower over there and that tower was shut down a number of years ago because the tower on Main Street is so much bigger and so much higher. The pressures were forcing water back to back up into the system, so they had to shut that tower down. Uh, which has left kind of a low-pressure planes throughout the city, this fixes that, not only in the commercial corridors and in residential corridors. We'll be able to achieve the thousand gallon per minute fire flow needed for residential fires, uh, and in most areas, uh, the fire flow for commercial, which is a bit higher. But the biggest thing it does is it replaces the line all the way down Main Street from where the overhead is, south to one seventy-four. And then it will turn and, and go south and make connections that feed in, directly feeding into Joshua Station by the La Quinta Hotel and, and put a large diameter line on that side of one seventy-four, which will prevent boring under the road. Excuse me, this thing really solves a lot of problems. Um, it's an, it's a, a shared expense that we have agreed. I worked out with uh, Jay said there will not be a a significant impact to new businesses and development tying on. That's not to say that that's gonna be perpetual, but we asked to put something in the agreement, which Terry was able to work out with their attorney. Um, that would have us sitting down and uh, coming up with a formula that makes fees proportional versus, you know, the first ten at a hundred thousand. Um, so that, that we, this benefit actually extends on, but does still allow them to recover some of the costs down the road as businesses continue to develop at some point. Um, then they will begin paying those development fees again, and we're gonna work out what that proportional number is. In, in the agreement, basically this says that it, that we'll sit down and work that stuff out and we're gonna do that right after the holidays, so far they've been very menial to everything that we want to do. Um, the initial cost of this, uh, cost participation is gonna be significantly lower. But when we started this project, it was a couple of hundred thousand dollars that they needed, but the project has probably tripled in length. Gone up significantly in size and that, and that's largely been at our request, so. Um, I think it's a it is gonna cost us a little bit of money, but I think it'll be money well spent. We can help incentivize uh, commercial development with not having to have some of these big impact fees hit some of these guys. Uh, which I think is gonna help, but it's gonna solve so many water problems. Um, we'll use a combination of funds to fund our portion of it, our portion is one point seven million with some change. First payment will be due. I remember the date, it's, it's, it's a fifty percent payment. Uh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five percent of the actual bid price. And it's a date of the reconstruction meeting with the contractor.
Okay, so we'll have, the first part of it will be paid just here in the next few, probably a few weeks, because we've had that meeting. Um, the second part of it is, won't be uh, due until um, I think they're ready to start looking at doing their inspections and most of the stuff will be in the ground. And then we'll use a combination of funding sources, we've asked type A who has pledged a hundred thousand so far to uh, consider increasing their participation, we, and we've also got some other revenues. ARPA funds are available for this, we, we may want to use some of those to help fund this. We've got uh, reserves in place that we could use, so I'll be giving you all some options. The first, a hundred percent of the first part of this money will come out of TIF funds. And that's what we're using to get this down down to the TIF, because right now we're built out now, and we've got there's no more water to be applied, we, we have to bring more water to that TIF or we're, we're done.
So that's one of the things we discussed about kind of ampering some of the building.
Right. This will solve that, yes, sir. Sure will.
Mike was talking uh, to me a little bit before the meeting about some of the citizens now making aren't real excited about the service interruptions and stuff. I mean, that's just, this part of what we have to, to live with and everything.
Disruptions of traffic.
I think everything, so.
They have a really good plan in place, uh, Ma and I, and they're, they said, meaning um, earlier this week and they have um, planned to notify all the customers um, in multiple ways. And they, it seems like they already have those that are gonna be identified.
They, they have plans for the traffic flow and so on and so forth.
Uh, David, have you still been with them at all for traffic? I don't think it reached that point, it would be kind of community of the citizen, but even almost. Um, and then we will make sure that David's kept in the loop as far as traffic from over and stuff like that.
Kristen will typically work out the traffic plans with them. And then we forward that to the fleet of our group. And he was, he attended the meeting with us.
Uh, that was the next question, being right there by the fire department, is that one of the strengths, their ability to respond?
It, it may slow them down a bit, I doubt it, because most of what, uh, there's a quick out for them, jumping on the pollen, going around them if they need to. Main Street will not be completely shut down, it will be of one lane below, I mean, will have to stay open, most of their work's gonna be on one side of the road anyway, I believe, the side of the roadway.
I think I recall them mentioning too, that they're gonna do some of the trouble areas, they're gonna do it and I don't wanna say a piece mill, but some of the known problem areas, they're gonna get what they can done and then work around those problem areas, I don't think they're gonna shake everything down at one time, was my understanding was what we need.
Yeah, but some of these, one of these areas along Main Street is high school traffic, when you get around Sixth and and the church, and so they're taking that into consideration, they're gonna be, you know, sympathetic to the restaurants and to try and, try not create too much havoc, but it is it is gonna be a problem for some, I mean, it, it's growth and it's, it's a new line, it's, you know, it's gonna be tapping into.
It's very well needed.
It, it absolutely, replacing an old cast iron line and it needs, it needs to come up, so. It's gonna be, unfortunately, it's gonna be aggravating, but it's gonna be worth it.
Shelley, do you have any questions?
So, one of the questions that, that type A specifically had, because we were entertaining contributing more than the one hundred thousand that we've already pledged was specifically around the question of any future development, any future, any future developers having to contribute towards the cost of this specific project. And when we were looking at this agreement where it's talking about sixteen-inch Joshua Main Street project. That's what's defined as project in this contract. And in line, in section one is where it's talking about, the parties acknowledge that, um, let's see. So the parties agree that the appointment of project costs to future end users contemplated in this agreement will be based upon a mutually agreed-upon format between JSE and the city. So what, what we understand is that there is going to be future development and there is going to be future projects and there is going to be a need for developers to contribute towards future projects, but this contract in front of us is about one contract, I mean, about one project. And what we're not clear on and what we were not ready to commit to additional funds to contribute towards is are developers going to have to contribute funds towards this project that what we understand would be paid for? And if the answer is no, then why does that line item, why is that line item in the contract? That's what we did not understand.
The reason we asked for something to be in the contract is so that we could get this proportional fee established.
So, so this fee actually works as like a reimbursement to, to JSE for their investment in the line.
It's a, yeah, it's, I think they call it a system development fee or something like that.
So, so future development, developers are reimbursing for the line that was put in so that we can approve additional growth, because now we have water to do it.
Correct.
That makes sense, Shelley?
I, I think what she's asking is, the reason why the city during the fifty-fifty split is to keep uh, JSE from charging the developers the hundred thousand that was initially proposed. So I think she's going to make sure that, is it still a fifty-fifty split? And where the developers will not impose any fee for this specific project or route for this sixteen-inch main or is this referencing later developments in addition to this section of this project?
Because later development is coming and later development is going to need contribution from, its contribution to the cost of construction, that is coming for future development, so we know developers are going to have to pay towards future projects that we know are coming. Are we also saying that JSE and the city are going to become to a mutually agreed-upon formula where they're having to contribute towards this project also?
No. The, the formula is gonna be to address at what point new development will begin to pay for this, the initial layout um, when, when they got the numbers in, they had just arbitrarily picked the first ten developments are gonna give them the payback for this and, and their buy-in was gonna be a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars apiece. Whether it was a five hundred lot residential development or a Whataburger, that was, that was gonna be it. And what we conveyed to them was it wasn't fair to use that kind of a number with that kind of a price, because it's not proportional to the project, this is a big project that expands a lot of feet and that, that, that's, it's not really reasonable for a small business to pay a hundred grand to get water service.
And we agree on that.
What we're gonna spell out is, or what we're gonna try to define is, at what point, let's say, maybe it's not ten businesses, maybe it's fifty. And if it's, they're worth twenty-five thousand or whatever, that's what would be those first fifty that would sound of this would not be assessed this fee, but fifty-one would have to, to pay a fee.
Which is a normal developmental fee that they charge anybody who's tapping into the water system.
Yes, correct.
So, so the first fifty, just throw your number out there, would not be charged any development fee.
Uh, other than their regular sewer taps and water tap, the regular fees that they already have. That's correct. We just have to figure out what that number is and, and I don't know if it's fifty or not. Um, I, I know it's not ten, um, I mean, that's.
But this is after this project is complete, that they would potentially assess the fees.
Yeah.
Then why is it part of this contract?
Because that agreement, we haven't worked out those details and I wanted I wanted both sides to commit to working out those details, that's why I asked for it to be in here. So that we don't forget.
Say so in what, what the fee would be.
Yeah, we, we wanna, we wanna seat at the table and what those fees are gonna be.
So we're, we're talking future, we're not talking within the next year or two, we're talking once this is added on to.
Which I would assume would be a, a different project and therefore a different contract. That's where I'm getting confused.
So, so, so the hangup is saying that, that these fees are for specifically this project?
Correct, that's where we're getting tangled up.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you're asking, yes, all we're paying for is this project right here, nothing else.
Correct, but the contract says that the word project with a capital P pertains to this. And that's what we are asking, we're, we're possibly going to have developers pay towards future cost of, that's why I'm questioning, we understand developers are going to have to contribute towards future development cost. For other projects. But this is referring to capital P project, which is this one in question. So that's why we were confused.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, I mean, this is, this is, yeah, this is the project. Uh, if it's, if it's unrelated projects, they would pay whatever JSE said, I mean, right now, under this, uh, prior to this agreement JSE could have gone out and said theoretically, he said, it's the first person in, you paid a whole cost, I mean, they could have. And Mike wanted to make sure that we were, we had a seat at the table discussing that's, that that would not occur. And that's what this says, this isn't, an agreement is what the costs are yet, this is just we, we agree that we're going to meet and talk about how those costs are apportioned. But we don't have that figured out quite yet.
I think she was trying to say, or the developments that are gonna be tied into it initially, that she wants to make sure that JSE, we're not gonna pay for half and then JSE is just gonna charge him additional fees that the city's already agreed to pay, on top of what the cities agree to pay. Maybe that's what he's asking.
Does that sound right, Shelley?
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it going towards that three point four million dollars or is it going towards future costs?
It wouldn't go for us future costs.
I, I think she's reading into it too much, I understand what she's asking, she wants to make sure that, yeah, the cities, we're, we're doing a fifty-fifty split to keep the developer from being charged for it now. But she wants to make sure that JSE is not gonna implement additional fees.
Or to, to break back to this project.
Yes, yes.
As far as we know, they're.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's no way of saying how they.
Yes.
But the intent of the verge that Mike requested to add gives us the building, like you said, to have a seat at the table and have a say.
And, and they so far have been very open, very transparent, very willing to talk, we're not getting any pushback. We just you know, I mean, if, if I'm gonna send almost two million dollars of taxpayer money over there, I wanna make sure that we're getting what we believe we're getting. And then it's gonna benefit us in the long run, because this is, there's no doubt, and, and I understand her concern too, it's not one of the
Let them struggle there.
Yeah, and, and so far they've given us no indication that they would, so.
Meaning that they have other similar agreements in place with some other cities, like this isn't the first time that they've done this, so I feel like, like you said, so far they've done.
Uh, uh, and I don't know about the other cities agreeing, I'm sure they do, there are in other cities, but this is the first time that we've well, it's the second time we've entered into an agreement with them, but the first one was through a well, it's the second time we've entered into an agreement with them, but the first one was through a community development block or whatever, there was actually no layout to the city. But it was a sewer project and so it was a benefit and we've had no issues from that one and uh I, I think we'll sit down again, I think it's just a matter of figuring out what that number is and um uh obviously I think there may be some other development that has nothing to do with this water line and their development fees will apply to those.
Correct.
That are directly affected by this one should not be up, up into a certain point, and I expect that to be years down the road.
Where does that point at, is that going to extend? Right now, as I understand it, it's going to run into Main Street and all the way to our property or not property, that city limits left.
Yeah. Now, a lot of that line is already in the ground, this is going to tie into it to increase the pressures of, right.
But, so this agreement will run to the city then sign that or where's the number of businesses that's going to come in and say they're going to want more money later?
That's what we have to figure out, we, I don't know what that number is yet.
So then why are we voting on this issue now?
Well, we got to. To get the project started.
Something start turning early. I'm going to, we've got to have the agreement. Did that address your question, Shelley?
Well.
Didn't ask if it answered, did I ask if it addressed it?
It does address it, I, I just wanted to clarify the reason that I was really wanting to, to press this, type A is willing to bring a, a, a significant amount of funding to help with this. Um a good portion is cover, is coming from TIF funds and then there was um the remaining amount type A was considering covering fifty percent of the remaining funds of the city's portion. Um we just, there were some specific questions around this that our approval was contingent on, so I think, Mike, we probably need to have a discussion with the type A board so that we can address that, because that additional funding was contingent on that, and at that point, at this point um for those, for those board members, it had not been answered, so that's what we want to make sure that everyone on that board is understanding so that we can contribute what we would like to bring to the table to help you know, move this along for the city and for the economic development of the community.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll get that taken care of, Shelley, thank you very much. And by the way, I, I want to thank you again for, for uh educating me last month on how JSE said, so I, I really did not understand that until you explained it that way.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your knowledge very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have, have we've discussed this, anybody else have any more questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, just prove, I mean, you're agreeing.
Have a motion by Mr. Kidd, seconded by Mr. Bryant Steen to approve plenty of agreements with Johnson County Special Utility District for the sixteen inch water main. Any more discussion? All those to favor? Do you know this? Okay, staff reports. If I have any questions on the staff reports? No? Okay. At this time, uh we're going to go into re-vested executive session for city business chapter five five one, subchapter D of Texas Government Code to discuss the following. Uh personnel management with the city manager and city secretary. And uh another discussion with our attorney, so we are recessed at seven forty. Okay, eight forty, we're called, being back order. There is no action necessary on any items discussed in executive session uh other than making the changes that we for, personally, or do we need to make, have a motion to uh take the action, the stuff in closed session, okay? Thank you, mister, well, you earned your pay.
And Scott, can, can you just send that what that is so that I can give it to Joanna?
Yes, I, I will send you an email. And it's a best for both city manager and city manager.
Yes, sir. So.
We need to make a motion.
Just make a motion to approve. What was this about?
Okay, so my, oh, make that motion.
On second.
Excellent, we have a motion by Mr. Bryant Steen, seconded by Ms. Nichols to approve what was discussed in executive session, all those favor? Do you know this? Okay, uh does anybody have any future agenda?
I don't matter, we, we still have the action on number thirteen, don't we? We skip thirteen, Mexico back. It is uh discussed, consider technical action on the cost of those projections.
That was just legal advice.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, well, it, it said here that they.
Yeah. Well, actually, right.
No one can take on that. Uh any future agenda, anybody would like to see this? No? All right, at eight forty-one, this meeting is adjourned.